Yeah, okay. Uh, with that, we don't have any, um, everyone's here. There's no need for, um, three A. Um, and so we're gonna go on to the pledge of allegiance. Can I get, um, council members, I'll say it, uh, sorry, pledge, please. Uh, can you do the pledge for allegiance, please?
I'm sure you can.
Five of the United States of America.
Thank you. Um, number five is reports, um, to council. Um, I'm sure hopefully everyone read. Um, none to six presentations and oral communications. This, uh, this is the, um, part of oral communication from the public, um, and I was not in the general. Oh, sorry. I skipped over. Sorry about that. Uh, so we're, um, go, gonna go on to five A at 2023, uh, Agostrophic River Weather Event, Flooding Report and Recovery Efforts. Staff.
All right. That's right here. Good afternoon, Mayor and, uh, council members. Uh, Tamara Vides, Assistant City Manager and currently serving as interim, um, Public Works Director. And, um, we're here this afternoon to present to the council a detailed report on the 2023 Atmospheric River Event that, uh, caused floodings in some areas of our community. And, uh, to present this information, uh, this evening, we have invited our regional partners, um, to join, uh, city staff. And I will, um, take a moment to introduce, um, who's here today. Uh, from the County of Santa Cruz, we've invited, uh, Matt Machado, and he is, uh, the Director of Community Development and Infrastructure. And, uh, Dave Reed, and Dave is, um, the Director of what is known as OR3, and is the Office of Response Recovery and Resilience that, uh, with the County of Santa Cruz. And Dave was, um, our lead in directing the emergency, um, during the response and, and, um, in the EOC. And then, uh, I believe, uh, someone that's known to all of you is, uh, Mark Sturtley. And, uh, he is, uh, serves as the Executive Director for the Pajaro Regional Flood Management Agency. And with the city staff, uh, we have two members of our public works team. We have Assistant Director, uh, Danielle Green, as well as, um, Jackie McLeod, who is our Environmental Sustainability Manager, and also led, uh, much of our internal response to the, um, um, emergency during the floods. And, um, it's my pleasure to pass on the mic to Jackie to get us started with this, um, report.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present. I wanted to give us a location. Where is the city of Watsonville? We are located in the Pajaro River watershed. The watershed itself comprises four counties, San Benito, Santa Clara, Monterey, and Santa Cruz. The watershed itself is 1,300 square miles. It is very large. We are not alone in how we manage the watershed. We have multi-agency coordination with the same partners that are here, as well as partners, uh, in the upper watershed, including Santa Clara Valley Water District, which, or Valley Water, as they're known now, that Mark coordinates with. We coordinate with County of Santa Cruz Zone Seven on a routine basis, County of Santa Cruz OR3, Monterey County, Monterey County Water Resources Agency, the Pajaro Riv- Pajaro River Regional Flood Management Agency, and us, the city of Watsonville. The city of Watsonville is 6.6 square miles. We're at the end of the watershed. We're three miles from the ocean. Now I'm gonna bring us down to the city of Watsonville. Unfortunately, you're not able to see the jurisdictional boundary, but we know that we border the Pajaro River, the Coraletos Creek, and Salsapuitas Creek. We work with FEMA, and we do flood mapping. FEMA mapped the floods, mapped the flood plains based on levees that have been historical from 1949. There has not been a major remapping effort. And so when we look at where these flood areas are, they're mapped in the blue areas. That's the 100-year flood plain. And that's gonna be important throughout this discussion to remember. Where is the FEMA 100-year flood plain? That is based on the National Hazard Registry. That is outside the city county's control. That is federal, and that's through FEMA. Once the levees are rebuilt, we will have a remapping, and that 100-year flood plain will change. With that 100-year flood plain, the city participates through Community Rating System Program that offers insurance discount rates to our residents. So it's an optional program that the city decided to participate in through the National Flood Insurance Program for, for, for people who live in the special flood hazard area. We just went through our recertification cycle, and we're waiting to hear what our class is. That class determines the percentage of insurance reduction rates for residents. At this time, I will now move on to the coordination that occurred between these agencies. When we had the emergency happen on New Year's Eve, we had multi-agency coordination that we worked through an incident command system. This is a standard command system where you work with your partner agencies. As you can see on our EOC chart, the city itself has Fire and Law located squarely under the Operations Branch, driving much of the response. We worked in a coordinated fashion with the County EOC, as well as the City EOC. Tamara was our EOC Director, and she would call Dave Reed, text Dave Reed, wake Dave Reed up. And they worked throughout the night through this emergency. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dave Reed.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. Um, so what I'd like to just bring our attention to is just the sequence of events that led to this federally declared disaster. So on this slide, I wanted to depict the nine atmospheric river events, um, in what's called the WY Water Year 2023. So this, this year, we hit nine atmospheric river events from December 27th through the 18th of, of January. You can see by those arrows kind of the general location of where they hit. But what's profound is that you, yeah, many of them hit in locations farther north, but then they rolled through our county, impacting our county in many different ways. As a context, in Water Year 2022, so last year, the entire state of California received one atmospheric river event. So the sequence of nine back-to-back-to-back, um, was unprecedented and significant, um, and, and led to the outcomes that we saw, um, countywide and in the city of Watsonville. Next slide, please. So as a review, um, our, our first atmospheric river event from that prior slide was on the 27th. That was kind of a priming of the system. In a subsequent slide, I'll explain what that means. But our big significant events that we felt countywide and here in the city started on that New Year's Eve storm event, where we saw the flooding, um, in the Coraletos and Salsapuitas Creeks and throughout the county. The county declared an emergency, um, on the 3rd of January in the aftermath of that event. The city of Watsonville did so as well. We did so on the same day. And then we were hit again on the 4th and 5th of January. If you recall, that event was forecasted to have a significantly higher amount of rain, which didn't materialize based on the forecast, but was the big coastal event. That the coinciding of the large swell, the very high tides, and the storm surge caused the devastation along our coastline. We declared again i- in the aftermath of that, um, because we weren't sure how the state and the federal government were gonna view these series of events. Then we were all hit again on the 8th and 9th, uh, experiencing further flooding in the Coraletos and Salsapuitas Creeks, and again on the 13th and 14th with more additional flooding. In fact, on the, I believe it was the 13th or 14th, I was giving a tour to the head of FEMA, and we drove through some of the flooding in South County, and some of you were at that, at that gathering in Watsonville. And then we received the federal presidential declaration on the 14th of January. Um, we were one of the first three counties, um, to be included in that declaration. Um, and that was a testament to our coordination with this, with the city to gather all of the initial damage estimates, um, from the city of Watsonville and our partner cities here in Santa Cruz County, get that information to the state to justify our inclusion in that first round. So it was a testament to, to city staff to get that information quickly to the state so that we could make that case and be on that first raft of, of declarations. Many more counties have been added subsequently. Next slide. This is really hard to see. Um, the bottom axis gives you a sense, you can, it's hard to see the numbers on each of those bars, but the test, the, the, this is showing rainfall totals at rain gauges around the county. And it's highlighting that over this period of time, from the 26th through the 17th, on average, we received over 24 inches of rain across all of those rain gauges, upwards of 36 inches of rain, um, in our upper watershed areas in, in the Santa Cruz Mountains and the San Lorenzo Valley. But in the Coraletos watershed, we received, I believe, over 20 inches of rain in the upper watershed area of Coraletos Creek. Um, and so just a significant amount of rain in a very, very short period of time. Next slide, please. And what that significant rain led to, um, and this is slightly complicated, so I just wanna walk through it for everybody. This shows the bar charts, the, the blue and orange bar charts are two different rain gauges. And it's the daily rainfall totals from each of the events. And what it's, and then the black line represents the Coraletos Creek river level, the stage of the river. That red line is the moderate flood stage elevation. And what's important to note here in this data is that the first storm that I mentioned on the 27th of December, you can see that we received at, at these particular rain gauges, um, upwards of three-plus inches of rain. In subsequent storms, in the New Year's Eve storm, we actually received less rain, but the black line depicts how dramatically different the river responded, because we had all of that rain saturating the soils already. And the river, though, it, you can see how that black line, it was able to recover a little bit, responded much more dramatically. And the forecast, even, you know, in that blue box, uh, at the Coraletos rain gauge, uh, just over three inches, we were forecasting much less rain falling. So not only was the forecast different than the reality, but the reaction of the river was really unprecedented. We were, we're not expecting that kind of a response of the river. And then you can see, as we get farther into the storm series, even, again, less rain, um, in that last 14th and 15th, 13th and 14th event, still caused the river to rise above that moderate flood stage. So it was the series of storms, one after another, saturating the soils that created those dramatic events, um, throughout Jan-, the early part of January. Next slide, please. And now I think I'm gonna hand it back over, or I'm gonna hand it here.
Yeah. Good evening, Council. Uh, thanks, David. Um, so I wanted to elaborate a little further on the flood warning system that we use collectively through our multi-agency coordination. What's shown on this map are green dots representing a number of real-time telemetered stream gauges. These are locations where either the USGS or other entities monitor the river levels, and that data is transmitted in real time and is available to the public over various, uh, web, web portals, including the Santa Cruz County's One Rain website. The sites that are labeled with the pink arrows and pink lettering are gauges that are pertinent for discussion here, and they include a couple gauges on the main stem of the Pajaro River, including the Chittenden Gauge and the Main Street Gauge, and then a couple gauges on the Coraletos-Salsapuitas Tributary System, notably the Coraletos Creek at Freedom Gauge, which Dave Reed was just mentioning, as well as, uh, the Salsapuitas Gauge on, on Lower Salsapuitas Creek. What's important to note here is that Coraletos Creek does not have a forecast for it in terms of how much water's coming down the creek. So we have forecasts and weather, but then we also have an added layer to that which is forecasted river flow. And there's only one site that we have that for in the Pajaro River Drainage Basin in the Santa Cruz-Monterey County area, and that's the Chittenden Gauge. And that gauge provides a forecast as well as, uh, a flood stage that relates to conditions at that location, but pertinent to flood concern downstream in the city of Watsonville and the town, town of Pajaro. Next slide. So this is a complicated, um, graph, and we won't talk about every little element of it, but this is one type of information that comes from the Chittenden Forecast. This is a forecast data set for river flow that was taken on the 8th of January for the storm system predicted over the 9th and 10th. And what you see is a whole bunch of, uh, lines, and then one dark heavy line kind of in the middle of the spectrum. This is akin to the Hurricane Storm Track Forecast you often see on the news, where the Weather Service and other weather agencies are trying to predict the path that the hurricane is gonna follow. Similarly here, these are a whole bunch of different model runs that try to depict what's gonna happen on the Pajaro River probabilistically. And what this shows, at least for the January 9th through 10th event, is a forecast, um, of above 32 feet, 32 feet being the flood stage on the Pajaro River, and the absolute limit of what was previously thought the levee system could carry, um, in the, on the Pajaro River. Uh, next slide. What actually transpired was a number of flood peaks that align with the atmospheric river vents that Jackie and Dave Reed were describing. But notably here, what you see in particular is over the, uh, January 9th to 10th storm event, the river level at the Chittenden Gauge reached, uh, about 28 feet. And what we had come to recognize was that this was roughly the carrying capacity of the levee system, based on that anecdotal information, but also that there were a number of observations of seepage and boils, because this is an aging levee system that we all understand needs to be replaced and repaired. And so just as there was incredible amount of attention and concern, uh, delivered to the Coraletos Creek overtopping situation, we had, uh, an incredible amount of attention and concern related to the Pajaro River, although there was no risk based on this specific forecast of a potential break interacting with the city itself. It was still a concern for unincorporated areas, just immediately upstream of the city of Watsonville. Uh, but it was also a concern for the town of Pajaro directly. Next slide. Again, these, uh, plots are, are a little bit small and hard to read, but what I want to call your attention to, um, is that these are two different forecast synopses for the January 10th event and one, uh, after it. And down at the lower end of both of these plots, which you can see is a green dotted line, a light green dotted line, and then a darker blue trace. The dark blue is what actually transpired in terms of the river levels, and the green is what was forecast. And what we were seeing through many of these events is repeated consistent river forecasts for reaching or exceeding flood stage, which led to some of the evacuations upstream of the city related to concerns here, as well as evacuations in the town of Pajaro. But the evacuations that occurred within the city proper were not related to concern on the Pajaro River. They were specifically related to concern on Coraletos Creek. Next slide. And so at this point, I'd like to hand the conversation over to Danielle.
Thank you. So I'm gonna address two specific topics. Uh, one is how our infrastructure performed through these events, as well as what our staffing was, particularly focused on, uh, the December 31st event. So before I get into storm specifics, though, I felt it was important to give you a background of what our, how our storm sewer system is designed to function versus what it was put through. Um, so the, the picture on the right there is a picture from our GIS mapping system. The green lines indicate underground, uh, buried storm sewer pipelines. Little hard to see, but you can kind of make out some squares there. Those indicate drain inlets where, um, when a storm comes through, the rain comes down, turns into surface flow on the roadway, travels by gravity to your curb and gutter, falls into the DI's, through the pipelines by gravity, actually towards the levee. Those are normally opened. Our operations staff monitors the creek levels. As they rise, we close the sluice gates, um, so that the, the creek water doesn't come back into the pipeline system. And at that point, we are relying on the pump stations to remove the surface water runoff from the neighborhoods out to the creek to have it drain. Go ahead. Kind of little background on our pump stations. Uh, all of the pump stations in the Pajaro Village area in that map are designed with more pumps than what is needed for operation. This provides backup and redundancy for, um, operating the system. Uh, it's also continuously monitored by an electronic system we call SCADA. And that monitors, uh, the pumps' operation, when they're on, when they're off, um, levels inside the wet well. It'll call out an alarm immediately to our on-call operations staff. Um, our standard operating procedure is to always have at least one operator on-call 24/7. That's during storms or not. And let's see, in addition to that, we also do monthly checks of our pump stations. That involves checking that the pumps are operating. We also test our automatic transfer switch, um, function, which we simulate loss of PGNI power, and that automatically kicks on the standby generators. And I wanted to bring this up, cuz I know, um, something that was a little bit puzzling for, for staff throughout the storm was, we kept getting calls that the pumps were not running in various locations. And, um, as I, I, I was even standing, uh, you know, in the field next to an operator and get a call that this pump station is not running. And I'm like, no, I'm literally here seeing it pushing water out. And so I think partly what may be causing that is, um, when we do these monthly checks, I think the residents might be used to hearing the generator kick on. Generator is really loud, but it's not normal operation. The generator only turns on if we've lost PGNI power, which thankfully is not very often. And so I don't know if that helps clear things up, but the, the pumps are designed to be intentionally quiet, cuz as you can imagine, it would be a nuisance to the neighbors if you heard it running throughout the storms. Next slide. So specific to, uh, the December 31st event, um, as I mentioned previously, we always have, uh, at least one staff available on-call. Heading into this event, as, um, Mark and David mentioned, we had, uh, rain events prior to that as well on the 27th. So our staff was already prepared, geared up, ready for action. And we actually had five of our six operations staff available and on-call, as well as one additional electrical maintenance staff who was ready to respond. They appeared on-site, um, throughout the 30th. And then by the early afternoon of the 31st, we had all six of our on-call staff on-site, checking pumps, making sure they're operating, checking DI's, making sure they were clear. You know, checking pump operation, monitoring the creek levels on top of the levees, communicating with our, our partners of where things are at and what we were seeing in the field. So what I can convey is that the pump stations were operating as intended, as designed, um, with the understanding that they're designed to convey our surface water runoff from that first map that I showed you, and not designed to convey a creek breakout, which I'll pass back to Mark, and he can go into further detail on that.
Thank you, Danielle. So bottom line, and understanding why Bay Village neighborhood flooded was based on a couple simple factors. One was the weather forecast, um, and the fact that the amount of rain that fell was, A, large enough to overwhelm Coraletos Creek, and B, was also contrary to our understanding going into the storm in terms of what was predicted to happen. Location, so the whole Bay Village area and much of Watsonville adjoining Salsapuitas-Coraletos Creek is in 100-year flood plain. And so there is residual risk there, and quite a bit of residual risk, even though there is a federal levee system protecting some of it. That existing federal levee system only provides protection against roughly the five-to-eight-year recurrence interval flood. And the spot that, uh, overtopped does not have a levee on it at all on Coraletos Creek. And furthermore, this is what we can expect and what we've been informed by experts in climate change science, that these types of experiences, um, with shorter rainy seasons and more intense rainfall is something that we can, uh, probably expect as we move into the future, into future winters, that this is part and parcel for the story that's been predicted based on climate change science. Next slide. So I just wanted to end this discussion to give a real brief overview of the fact that we do have a new levee reconstruction project that, um, is coming online soon. Um, and in fact, the area that flooded on Coraletos Creek, which is called Reach Six, and it's shown here by the dark green and dark purple lines upstream of East Lake, that is the first section of this new levee reconstruction project that the Army Corps is gonna build. That is the first section that we're in design with them right now. And it's expected that that system is gonna go into construction in 2025, starting with that most critical reach. The reason that we requested the Army Corps prioritize that reach is because of the exact reason why we saw flooding. We knew that it was the most vulnerable location. Usually, the Army Corps starts downstream and works their way up on projects, but we requested the opposite because we knew that was an unleveed portion of a flood-sensitive area, and that it stands to flood good portions of the city of Watsonville, which is what we saw. The other good part about this project is that it will be essentially free to the community, the construction of the project. This is a $400 million project. $260 million of it are gonna be coming from the Army Corps, and they have already put forth 150 million. The remainder, that is usually a local requirement, is gonna be paid by the state. And this is the only project in the history of these types of flood projects in, in California that has ever had that kind of authorization. So it is coming a little later than I think we all hoped it to, but it is on the horizon, and there's no pulling back now that that kind of investment has been made. So I just wanted to end with that and pitch it back to Tamara.
That, um, basically concludes our report, and we're happy to, um, answer any questions the council may have.
All right, thank you. Um, first, um, I really wanna thank, um, the Pajaro Regional Flood Management Agency for, um, coming today and being a group partner. As you can see, you guys are on a first-name basis, working together, um, solves a lot of, a lot of issues, and, um, and you also become, uh, weather-savvy experts, which is, um, you know, God sent, but, um, council member Mark.
Thank you. Um, I, I was one of those that only two inches up. So it happened so quickly.
Uh-oh, yeah, that's right. I forgot about that. Thank you, city clerk. So, um, one of the things that was really, uh, a perception of the people that live in Bay Village was the fact that, and, and this has to do with the pumping system and everything else. The water came up so quickly, and it was massive, and it was a current, because it was basically a little river coming through it. And then it dissipated that quickly, too. Once it stopped, it just went. And that led to a perception that the pumps weren't working, and look, the pumps worked, and it all went out. I didn't know what was going on at the time. I just knew what they knew, which was everything was flooding, and then it stopped and slowly dried up. And then we were left with, you know, sitting water. So, um, could, we have a, a slight description. I know what I say about it, um, and it all has to do with the Coraletos Creek, right? One side and then the other, but, uh, I kept telling them it wasn't the pumps. One side and then the other, but I kept telling them it wasn't the pumps. It was the natural flow of the water. But could you clarify that?
Yeah, so Corleatos Creek is what we call a flashy hydrologic system. It's flashy in that it responds very quickly to rainfall and also falls back down once the rainfall stops. And Tamara, do you want to go back to David's slide with Corleatos Creek? You can see pretty clearly from those really rapid, rapidly rising responses to rainfall that the peak rising and falling can happen within a couple hours. And so you can see the creek rise above flood stage and fall back down below flood stage within a couple hours. So that is a direct reflection of what people saw in town, was that sudden and very intense turning-on overflow of Corleatos Creek, and almost as quickly, it falling back down below flood stage, waters stopped spilling out of the channel, and the residual water on the floodplain in the neighborhood dissipates because the pumps are moving that water out of the system.
And the question I have with it, and I understand that, but it happened faster than that. It happened faster than a couple hours when it went down. And so I don't know what happened on the other side. I do know that Orchard Park and all those houses in the county area, college and everything flooded. It overflowed and broke on that side, the Corleatos Creek.
It did. It broke on both sides. It overflowed on both sides. I think it more catastrophically overflowed on the city of Watsonville.
I think that was first. That's what...
It was first.
It was first. And so that broke on that side. At the same time, then that led water that way, and our pumps could more manage the water flow that was coming?
Well, that might be part of it. There's a lot of details that data will not bear out, other than the fact that their water is moving in a pretty complicated fashion through the storm drain system and back into the creek. So even if the creek itself rises and falls within a couple hours, based on where you are in the neighborhood, you very well might see water dissipate within an hour. It just depends on where exactly you are. And the flow path that the creek followed, once it broke over its banks, was complicated and followed roughly the street system. And so what you see really depends on where you are in the neighborhood. And the topography, the change in elevation through the town, is very subtle. I mean, if you're there on a dry day, you can hardly tell that there's differences in elevation. But when you're there, when there's water there, those differences are very apparent, and water moves really quickly in and out of those really low elevation areas.
For many past floods, decades and decades ago, I knew what high ground was. That's where my car went to, and then I walked back across. I have another question with the, not just the flow of water, but the impact of water on those residents and how quickly, and this may be city-focused, and how quickly the city responded to that knowledge because, I mean, it happened outside of the city limits, this act of God or catastrophic flooding. And we had no knowledge of that. And how long did that take for us to have knowledge that this was happening, other than my frantic, what that, you know, is going on amongst others, you know? Because that was a water flow that wasn't stopping. So the communication aspect is another really important part of the perceptions of everyone who lived in Bay Village, that their homes were filled up with water, that their cars were, you know, overflowed with water, and garages, whatever, and it had been 45 minutes to an hour, and they hadn't heard anything. They didn't know what was going on. So I just wanted to bring that up and find out what the natural, you know, EOC, whatever response of the communications response.
That evening of December 31st, there was, as Danielle shared, we had our operators onsite. We had public work employees that were in direct communication with us, personally with myself, and just sort of conveying the observation, what they were observing on the field. And at one point, we were all in communication, Mark, Jackie, myself, and then we immediately engaged our law enforcement and fire branches, who are our partners in determining the course of actions of what we do now. And at the moment that, during the evening, we began alerting the neighbors that there was water on the streets, but at that point, the water had traveled into the city channels at a point where the safer thing to do was to remain in place. There was no way of retaining the water or, you know, just the water was already on the field. And so that's basically what happened. It just happened really quickly, as you heard tonight. And that night, we had our fire, our fire engines were engaged, helping some of our residents, rescue them, taking them to high ground, dry land, and just, we opened up a shelter by 10:45 that night on December 31st, and began mobilizing, you know, our coordinated response to like, okay, how, what do we do with these residents that now might be displaced in the middle of the night? Fortunately, people did remain, most of our residents remained home despite how difficult or frightening it might have been to have all that water surrounding you and not being able to go anywhere at that point. Not even, not even our response vehicles could navigate some of those streets while the water was that high. And later on that evening, I was out with our crews until about 2:30 AM that morning, and we still had, many of our streets were flooded. So the next morning, we mobilized very, very early in the morning with our crews. We had several of our employees that were recalled and began trying to assist with debris removal and just a lot of branches and mud that were overflowing our streets. So that is how we responded to that, short of what we learned, and you could see that response from the night of the 31st to the second rain event. One of the reasons why we were able to really plan, mobilize, a door-to-door kind of outreach, and print out flyers, and knock on neighbors' doors, was just the learning of when this happens, it happens fast, and it happens, so if we want people to be safe and out of the area, the better system to use is early alert. We utilize our Zone Haven notification system to be able to issue warnings and evacuation orders when those were necessary. And that was, you know, quickly what we learned from the evening of the 31st.
Thank you, yeah. And of course, people in the area, Zone Haven was somewhat not effective for them during that hour, two hours, three hours, you know, that they were going through it. I have a question over here with, and an opportunity to explain because you explained to me, and I calmed down. I was very stressed that night. And I'm thinking, where the heck did this water come from? I know it didn't come from the Paharo River levee because I've seen that happen before, and I thought, where did this come from? And it came from the Corleatos Creek, and it was in the county, and I was all like, well, why can't you block it? Why can't this happen? You know, why can't? Could you explain the do-no-harm philosophy? That's how I named it in my head, to if you blocked a certain area, the Corleatos Creek, or blocked a certain area, what would happen to another area?
Yeah, certainly. So after that first event, we were thinking about how to mitigate a future occurrence of that. And that January 4th through 6th window had another very aggressive forecast. Our initial idea was to kind of corral the water in the farm field so it didn't cross Bridge Street. But of course, that compromises neighborhoods there and puts pressure on neighborhoods that are adjacent to that farm field, and also could create quite a deep lake on that farm field that would be difficult to control. We also considered installing Muscle Wall along Corleatos Creek. Muscle Wall is essentially a flood mitigation, flood fight type technique. It's essentially water-filled K-rail, K-rail being those concrete barriers that you see on roadways. First of all, you'd have to install several thousand feet of it on either side of the creek between Green Valley Road and East Lake Avenue. The other thing is you would just shift the flood focus downstream, and you would probably have flooding in many of the same neighborhoods because if you don't overtop with that amount of water, you would certainly overtop the levee system downstream. And you would also put additional flood pressure on neighborhoods that didn't see as much flood pressure from this system. So I don't think any decision is ever going to be made to try to mitigate a flood event by putting flood pressure on a different neighborhood because you're actually doing something that actively induces flooding. So the other thing is that it would have overwhelmed East Lake Bridge. If we somehow corralled the water in the stretch of Corleatos Creek upstream of East Lake, it would have overwhelmed the bridge there. And admittedly, East Lake Avenue was compromised by the water running over, across the Bridge Street, but you also would have compromised a lot longer section of that roadway and major thoroughfare.
Am I right in asking the question that these other neighborhoods that many of us would have rather the water had gone to, that they're not in flood zones?
No.
Say that, you know.
They're in flood zones, and it would have affected many of the same neighborhoods within the city, as well as other neighborhoods in the unincorporated county area on the other side of the creek.
Okay, so they're in the same thing. Okay, and here's the other question that's posed, and it's not, it's not going to be a pretty answer, I know. What's going to happen? Because this thing's not going to be fixed till 2025, and it's 2023.
So, yeah, that is the sad reality, that the fix here, there's no Band-Aid or easy fix to keep this kind of water within the Corleatos Creek. If we get this kind of rainfall event again with this kind of setup, it will overwhelm Corleatos Creek in the same locations because those are the most vulnerable low spots where water can exit after overtopping. And the long-term fix is the next fix to this problem.
You did do some mitigation within the Corleatos Creek after the 31st, between the next that one and the preparations for the next storm that kind of split on us?
Yeah, Matt, do you want to take that?
Sure, absolutely. So what we tried to do was to maximize the capacity of the existing creeks. And we do that on as routine as we can, but we did remove debris, and that's a regular maintenance operation. It doesn't add more capacity than the creek can handle, but it does maximize the capacity we have. And that's certainly a mitigation that we will continue to do throughout this winter and the coming winters, and that's part of our maintenance and operations of the existing system, even though the existing system is really not up to the task of some of these large rain events. But that's correct. That is our, that's our plan going forward to date.
And to add to that, the Zone 7 drainage crew actually did a creek walk up Corleatos Creek as a routine maintenance activity before we had the forecast for the storm. So they actually did a creek walk in December to make sure there wouldn't, weren't any woody debris blockages. And then after that first event came down, there were four of them that were immediately plucked out.
Well, as we all heard, there were mattresses, there were all sorts of things.
That's true. I would probably add that we'll continue to try to be ready for storm events with sandbags and sand, and we all experienced that to a great degree with, you know, running out. And I think in future years, we'll be more in tune to larger supplies in more locations. And so getting sand and bags to people that need it is also a critical mitigation measure.
I want to make comments about how awesome the responses were, even though I didn't feel it that night. But if anybody has any questions, I know the public has questions.
Yes, anybody else have any questions? Councilmember at all.
I think Councilmember Ari Parker, she asked the last question. She asked about, you know, what the plan was. So I'm assuming there's lessons learned from this time around, and I'm hopeful that we will be even better prepared next time. So I would be interested, interested to know what those lesson learns were, and to what, if there's a plan or a plan of action so that when next storm hits, we're able to even respond much sooner, much better, and possibly even more helpful.
Yeah, so I'll start. One of the things that we do after any disaster is what's called an after-action review. And that's an opportunity to reflect on the things that went well and the things that need improvement in any disaster. And so one of the things that we recognize is that there's always learnings, there's always room for improvement. So the County of Santa Cruz has a consultant on board. We're going to begin what's called an after-action review. We're going to partner with the city of Watsonville and other jurisdictions to have that consultant review, the lessons learned, the ways in which we can improve our response, our communications, and our operational decisions. So that's one of the standard of practices in terms of finding ways to improve so that we learn from this event and we have a better coordinated response between the county and the city, but also city operations and county operations identifies ways to make improvements. So I know that we're looking at improvements, as an example, in the definition of our Zone Haven zones, and I know that the city took action in the middle of the, of the series of events to refine those zones. And I think we're all looking at that, both countywide and within the city, so that we're notifying the right people at the right time. But there's certainly other things, but that's one strategy that we will be taking in collaboration with the city to make improvements.
And fortunately, we do have such a regional partnership that the city of Watsonville, I think it was two weeks after the last storm, we've already met with Paharo River Flood Management Agency and County of Santa Cruz Zone 7 to discuss river gauge monitoring. We discussed our pump stations. We discussed how we can move forward in a coordinated way. When we declared our emergency, we, the flood control partners were working very closely together, and we recognized afterwards that we did have some lessons learned, and one of them was really our monitoring. I know we received a lot of questions about why can't we see the gauge, stream gauges? And so we're considering moving to that USGS gauge model so that it's available, much like the one rain site. So that's one of the lessons learned on the flood side for us.
I have a question, so now it just escaped me, but notifications, did the reverse 911 call went well, or are we thinking about other avenues to notify the community?
I think, I think that's, I would describe that as a lesson learned, not only, not only for us, but also for the community. I constantly was talking about like, oh, I'm not on social media. I'm not registered for reverse 911 code red system. The best thing that any resident can do for themselves is to register to something so that in the event of an emergency, you can be notified. Because if you don't take proactive, proactive approach to connect with a system that can actually notify you that something's going on, there's not much that we can do. There's not always time, as we had, you know, in the, in the days leading to the second storm, to go north to door and drop flyers, right? That's not always feasible or possible. So I think it's, that's important, and it's a message that I think we all can learn from that, just connect with something like, whether it's code red, so that you, you're eligible to get those reverse 911 calls. Anybody that was registered, receive those 911 calls. We had Tom Avila, who, from our fire department, just doing a fantastic job coordinating with Dave and 911 team in coordinating our messaging. We had coordinated a message with the county, so every time that we provided, issued a notification, warning, or an evacuation order, was always in coordination with our, with our county partners and utilized the system that was in place. But again, it's, the system is as good as you are accessing the system, right? So it's something too important to remember.
Thank you. But I just remembered my question. So it looks like, you know, from the Corleatos Creek is our weakest link because you prioritize that event for funding, it's a design stage. Is there a way to speed up that project? Is there a way to speed up that project?
So there's only one way that I'm aware to speed it up right now, and that is to have the Army Corps do what's called a design-build process. A design-build process, however, requires the full federal investment to be made. And so that's why when Senator Padilla visited very recently, and in addition to other conversations we're having, including earmark discussions that are coming up now, we are requesting for that full federal funding to be made. And like I said before, it's about $260 million of federal funding. We have about $150 right now. So we need the balance of that for a design-build process to actually work with the Army Corps, because otherwise they won't follow that procedure. They are, however, trying to get the construction agreement for the project signed early, and what that would allow them to do is to actually start reaching into some of that $150 million to expedite the remainder of design. So right now, they're working on Reach 6, which is this critical area between East Lake and Green Valley. Reach 5 goes from East Lake all the way down to the confluence, and that's next. And so in order to start completing the design for that process, they need to use some of that $150 million. In order to do that, they have to have the construction agreement signed. So we're actually trying to get that signed in advance of actually getting to the construction phase.
Thank you, thank you for that explanation. Councilmember Parker.
Just a quick, old days, and it was buzz and blares out. And I don't want to, I have a sense of humor about it now, because I'm not in the middle of it, but the whole idea of where and who is in this flood zone, these are seniors. These are people who, you know, I mean, if you'd done this 10 years ago, it'd be like, seriously, not on the internet. This group is kind of, kind of on the end, maybe a third of them to a half, and even having cell phones is not normal for everybody to have. They don't use them the same way. So they need something different. I know you're talking about being proactive, but for God's sake, you know, somebody put a senior village, senior villages right in the middle of a flood zone, and for connection to them, and I did talk to Chief about, you know, do you have any of those old alarms that she could bring out and set out, you know, in our area? And I still think low tech sometimes wins out when you have a varied group of people like we do, for at least the next couple of years.
Let me talk a little bit about that, because it's not an unusual request in the unincorporated part of the county in our wildfire areas. You know, there's talk about sirens, especially after Paradise. Paradise has installed a siren system. The key piece that Paradise has done is that they paired a siren with a message board, because the challenge with a siren is that it doesn't give you information. It doesn't give you information on where to go, what to do, what's happening. So it is, to your point, low tech and a technology that we're not advocating, because we really want to give people the right information effectively. So even if you don't have a cellphone, even if you're not on the internet, you can register your landline, the lowest of low tech, to Code Red and receive that phone call. So we really do, as Tomata said, we really do want to encourage folks to sign up for Code Red, and for those who have the technology, sign up, register their cellphones, have some presence on the internet with social media. We want to use all of those channels, because we recognize that not one tool is going to reach everybody. But we want to be able to give people the best information, and a siren is not really going to be able to do that. It will point them to look somewhere, right? And so we would rather cut that process out and have them get the right information right away, and we feel like that's what the 911 system does, rather than just a siren.
I hear what you're saying. I'm just saying, I know the people I live with, and it'd be great to have a board with a siren. All come running out and looking out. I mean, they go to bed at 7 o'clock at night, you know, and they take their hearing aids out. I'm not joking. I mean, this is, not everybody, but this is a large group of people. And they don't have the flashing lights on the wall to wake them up, you know. I get it. I'm just saying, we put them there, we have a senior flood zone, and I just really want to be able to get to everybody in an emergency status, especially for the next half, two years.
Well, that's a very good point, and I think it's a point that we took seriously in responding to the subsequent rain events. How do we ensure the safety and providing our residents enough time to find alternate locations or places to go to, because we know of mobility issues or, you know, so I believe in our local response, we really prioritize that, and in conversations with our county partners, even the city went a little bit ahead to really prioritize that, because it was, knowing our community, and it was important that we gave them as much notice as possible. And part of what we use, that sort of resembling what you're asking to consider, is utilizing the PA systems of our patrol cars and our fire personnel. We had a unit that was dedicated to patrolling the senior village area, as well as many of our police car units were announcing, you know, loud, to make sure that people knew that they were being requested to evacuate the area. So it's...
Good old fashioned stuff like that, early on.
Good old fashioned, yes. And we used it.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. But I'm also going to give an opportunity for the public to end at its item, so if you...
Steve Trejo, District 7. Ari knows me well. I sent her a number of emails during that lovely month of January, didn't I? The 600 block of Atrey Court is becoming a ghost town. People are leaving out, they've got pods, and they're leaving. There was a huge trash dumpster on the 600 block, now empty. It was full, beyond full. I take my dog every day past our beautiful generator there at the back end of 740 Bronte Avenue to check on it, particularly during rainstorms. And my dog went out and I, every day, no matter how bad the water was and the rain, to go see if it was doing its job. Well, guess what? It was, and doing a wonderful job, and it was running at full tilt. And I also want to compliment, Jamie Dutrow came by my sister's house on Almond and my house, bringing the notice, giving it to me, and saying, "Get a raft, Steve." In addition to that, I got so many calls on both my cellphone and my landline, emergency phone calls, yeah, I think about at least eight or nine through January, and some wonderful police officer, I don't know who it was, one here, drove by, drove down Bronte, and in the nicest way possible, said, "Get your stuff and get out." And, no, so yes, I want to compliment, the city did a good job in letting me know, and unlike many of my neighbors, I don't take out my hearing aids, don't wear any, and I don't go to bed at 7 o'clock. But believe me, I was checking my curb, the water in my curb. I went next door on either side and across the street to let my neighbors know, who didn't know, the water was coming up over the curb and heading up their driveway. So I do appreciate this wonderful project, it's going to get done. I hope it is going to be done within another two years. I love living in Paharo Village, I love living in Watsonville, and I'm here to stay, folks, no matter what comes, hell or high water.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Seeing none, bring it back. Any last-minute comments or questions, Bernie? Thank you very much. I'd like to thank everyone for being here, and other representatives, thank you for your work, and, you know, I also want to take this opportunity, you know, city employees through, since the 31st, worked 10,022 hours. They put their hearts out from, you know, low line to all the way, so it's, I got to congratulate them, they worked with everyone, so just want to thank, you know, on behalf of the community, all the jobs that they did, all the sleepless nights a bunch of you had, so just thank you. With that, we're going to go on to, we have no update on the city manager, so we're going to go on to 5C, the Community Compost Give Back Presentation by the Public Works and Utilities Solid Waste Division.
I'm Danielle Green, Assistant Director of Public Works and Utilities. I'm here with Tammy Stolzenthauer from our Solid Waste Division, and we're very excited to announce a pilot free compost give-back program. This is part of our compliance with SB 1383. I know maybe not all of you were here for the SB 1383 rollout, so just a very high-level overview of it. It's a law passed by the state of California to remove short-lived climate pollutants from our landfills, and that's tackled in two major ways. The first is to minimize the amount of food waste that is created, and Tammy works closely with some of our groceries in town to work with our food banks to reduce the amount of food waste that's produced. And then the food waste that is produced, you'll see our lovely, sometimes controversial, green waste bins. If you had a yard waste bin already, you're now putting your food scraps into that green bin, and if you didn't have a yard waste bin before, you now have one for your food scraps. And over 2022, we have separated 4,700 tons of organics, which is quite a bit, and for reference, get my notes here, so that is the equivalent of 4,100 metric tons of carbon emissions removed from the landfill, which I'm told is the equivalent of about 10,700 cars being off the road. So already a pretty huge impact. I know some people don't like the green bins, but it does have a big purpose. And the other big one is, which is also part of our SB 1383 compliance, is our compost procurement required, requirement, excuse me. Each agency is required to procure back the compost that they have created from the food waste they have separated. So I'll hand it to Tammy to talk more about that.
So good evening. My name is Tammy Stolzenthaler, and I'm the Senior Environmental Projects Analyst with Solid Waste. And now for a review of the compost procurement in Watsonville. Under SB 1383, which is our California Short-lived Climate Pollution Strategy, the city is required to procure back 2,383 tons of compost annually in order to earn the required 4,100 tons of procurement in credits. And this compost is, of course, derived by our organics waste collection around the city at our businesses and residences. And in order to procure this amount, the cost to the city is about $20,000 in 2023. And of course, compost will be free to Watsonville residents starting next week, and it costs the city about $17 per yard for this compost, including the transportation. We are very excited to kick off the Community Compost Give Back Pilot Program next week. The community will be offered free compost for their yards and their gardens. This compost is recycled from our very own green cart food and yard waste collected at Watsonville homes and businesses. So thanks to everybody who's actively participating in the separation of all your food scraps and yard waste, and we're hoping that you'll keep this free of plastic contamination. Keeping these plastics out of the green cart builds this higher-quality, very nutrient-rich soil. Compost sequesters carbon back into our Watsonville soils while also reducing the amount of methane gas that's emitted from landfills. So we're very glad at this point that our community will benefit from this compost recycled from our organic waste. Here's a review of the Community Compost Give Back Guidelines. So we will begin with the give back, starting next Wednesday, March 1, at the city's own recycling and waste drop-off center located on Harvest Drive. We will be open for compost distribution Wednesday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And the compost is available only to residents who reside inside the city limits. The compost is self-loading only, and residents are required to bring their own containers, shovels, and gloves. Residents can pick up an initial limit of a half-yard two times a month. No trailers or oversized vehicles are allowed at our city recycling center. The compost is not available for commercial profit or landscape resale. Through this pilot giveaway, we will explore options for commercial properties in the Community gardens and schools are already benefiting from this rich recycled compost. Pictured here is this compost being utilized at the Paharo Valley Climate Food Forest Project. And here at the Kerry Davis Community Garden, they are utilizing this compost to grow vegetables while engaging the neighborhood volunteers. So we're very much looking forward to the Community Compost Give Back. Now we will watch a video on the community compost, and thank you for engaging with our presentation this evening.
... transformed into rich compost. Free compost for Watsonville residents. Your food scraps and yard waste have been transformed into rich compost for indoor and outdoor plants, trees, and gardens. This compost improves water retention and reduces the need for pesticides and fertilizers. Residents can pick it up at the Waste and Recycling Drop-Off Center at 320 Harvest Drive while supplies last. Be ready to load your own compost and bring your own shovel and containers. For more details, call customer service at 831-768-3133. Abono gratis para residentes de Watsonville. Sus restos de comida y del jardín han sido transformados en abono para plantas, árboles y jardines. Este abono mejora la retención de agua en la tierra y reduce la necesidad de usar pesticidas y fertilizantes. Residentes pueden recogerlo en el Centro de Basura y Reciclaje en 320 Harvest Drive hasta agotar existencias. Tenga preparado para llenar sus propios contenedores y traiga su propia pala y recipientes. Para más detalles, llame al 831-768-3133.
Councilmember Dutra.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. I'm always really proud of Watsonville when we are just so ahead of everybody when it comes to reducing our carbon footprint, and I go to a lot of these conferences, and a lot of times, people are talking like, what can they do to reduce the carbon footprint? And they're not even implementing ideas that we've already implemented, like, within years ago. So, thank you. Two questions. The compost, you were saying that the certain amount, is that the weight of it, or is that included in the green bins, you know, with the trees and the shrubs? Is that counting all that as well, or are you only counting the compost bins that only has compost? Because some's mixed, right?
So we've collected, you know, in 2022, we collected about 4,700 tons of organics that were processed this year. But when it comes to procurement credit, the calculation is determined by the state, and it has to do with population. So every city, every jurisdiction in California has a certain procurement credit target that they're given, and it's according to how many people live in the city.
And so, but towards that credit, the only boat bins are being counted? Okay, thank you. And then, one of the biggest, kind of, I don't know if it's complaints or issues or concerns that people have with this, especially when I was walking in the adult village, is that a lot of times, they want to put the, and I would do this too, actually, put the, I guess, compost into a compostable baggie, and then want to throw it in there, and I guess you can't do that, right? So how do we get to that point? Because that's how I do it. I... Because that's how I do it. I throw my stuff into a bag. And a lot of times, I'm not going to be, like, dumping it out into my green bin because it's already full of goo, eggs, and everything else, you know?
Yeah, many, some people feel that it's inconvenient to not be able to use a bag. We went to our compost processor facility, and they were showing us how even the BPI bags are not breaking down in the composting process. And it costs a lot more to process compost that's contaminated with the BPI bags or the plastic. And the quality just isn't as rich and as clean as the compost that we're going to be giving back to the community. So even though it's inconvenient, we're asking people to, you know, follow our tips, to keep your cart fresher. We're also hoping to, we're partnering with a company that has a service where they can come to people's homes to clean the carts at a fee. So if people really can't clean their carts, they can pay for this service that will come to their door and clean the carts for them.
That can be pretty gross, I mean, with all that sitting in there. So how about compostable bags, though? I mean, you can't put that in there as well?
Our compost processor doesn't want us using the BPI bags because they're not breaking down well.
BPI is compostable, not plastic?
Yeah, and one thing, our compost processor did say is that if you need to use some kind of bag because it's really not working for you, you can layer it with leaves and other yard waste. Another thing to do is just use a thin paper bag, you know, like a paper shopping bag, and use that to put your food scraps in.
And you could throw the paper bag in there? Oh, okay. Oh, that's good to know. But, I mean, the thing is, it gets soggy. It's kind of, it'll be kind of a mess. I hope that we can, someday, someone can create some sort of compostable bag that we can just put our compost in and then toss it in there. So someone can make a lot of money on that. Get on it.
I've been doing it for years, but it's just me. Councilmember Parker.
So it goes beyond inconvenient. I'm in District 7, so I'm just going to say, they physically can't move. They have three of them now. They can't, they have mess. My next-door neighbor has tons of rats with their fruit trees. So anything like that is just a mecca for it. And so I'm glad to hear about the paper bag, even though it will get less, it would be less of a mess. And then, they can't afford, a lot of people can't afford in the senior area, you know, they barely make it, to actually pay someone to clean out there. I mean, I hate to sound like a whiner on this one, but it's really been more than an inconvenience. It's been a straight-up lifestyle change. And what's happening is, people aren't doing it. They're throwing their stuff in the garbage, and they're just not using it. So until we get to a happy medium on that, where they can do it and recycle in that way. I'm just saying, it's hard to get people to comply.
Councilmember Roscoe.
You mentioned that only residents from the city of Watsonville can have access to this product. What about, because I know, I'm not sure if the pilot program is already in place at PBUSD schools, but there is some schools outside of city limits. So I'm wondering how they can benefit from that, since most of the kids do and are, or live within city of Watsonville limits.
Well, our first priority, of course, for the compost give back is the city limits. And we have a definite level that we have to procure this year. And so I mentioned, we're working with a few of the schools that have already received the compost. So our first priority is going to be the schools and the community members inside the city limits. And then, what the schools can do is contact the Green Waste, which is the county hauler, and see if they're going to be starting the, if they have some kind of community give back of the compost. And then, if we ever get to the point where we're not meeting our procurement target or close to it for the year, there's going to be more openness to distributing more compost. And I'm sure our nonprofits and schools near the area would be a priority.
I would just add, as Tammy said, it is a pilot. So we really have no idea what the demand is going to be. We'll find out on March 1st, and we're open to adjusting as needed.
I think it's just an exciting opportunity, even for schools within city limits. I think both in educational, environmentally friendly, but also, you know, just a way to give back and educate future generations about the importance of composting and taking care of our planet and so forth.
Thank you. With that said, anybody from the public like to weigh in on this item on the agenda? Looking, none? We'll bring you back. Thank you. They have wonderful information. Number six is presentation and oral communications from the public. So this time, it's set aside for members of the general public to address the council on any item not in the council agenda, which is within the subject matter jurisdiction to the city council. I can read all of it, so can we start?
Well, first of all, Mayor, thank you for your article in the Poweronian. You noticed I wrote a rather lengthy response to you. And it was not critical of you, but I just wanted to add, like, 10 things that I would like to see done, including a name change on the ballot for the city. And that's, oh, yeah, well, it needs to happen. Charles Watson was an evil man. Should never have, the city should never have been named for him. Let's try Berryville or something better. The other things I wanted to respond to is, Ari, why don't you come to our beautiful clubhouse in Paharo Village, and you and I can explain to the elders, our peers, why they need to use the green barrel and what it does for them? I am tired of picking up pieces of plastic, forks and bags, and I won't use other words. I won't, I'll keep my language clean. I thought we were going to have a sunset on single-use plastics in the city. Whatever happened to that? We need to bring them back, because they were, well, they're here. Anyway, we need to get the single-use plastics. We're dyeing the plastic. It's in our food. They're finding in our systems. They're finding in, babies are just born. It's in their blood. I mean, this is scary. Plastics are not our friend, and they never really were. And as Jimmy just said, we're way ahead on this. And Jimmy, you know plastics are evil. You know, they're not doing us any good. They're doing a lot of harm. And I'm talking about single-use, single-use. That stuff, those get down our storm drains and clog and keep water from getting out to the ocean. I mean, they're just evil. And yes, folks, I would love to have a bird refuge or an aviary, it could be a bird refuge, in our newly redesigned Ramsey Park. That would be a very good thing. 206 types of birds identified a year ago last month by the International Society of Birdwatchers. Please consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone stepping in?
Hi, Mayor. Hello, everybody. Kirby Harris, Bridge Street, Bay Village, Senior Village, District 7.
The mayor.
Ms. Parker. First of all, and I keep singing this song, all honor and praise to Parks and Rec and Public Works and every one of you for the great job that you did once we knew what was going on. I can't say enough about how many of the staff and crew of Public Works helped so many of our people in Bay Village. I mean, they brought them bags. They helped move things. They deserve all the thanks that you can give them. And what would be nice is if our folks that live in the neighborhood, when they see our crews out there, is roll down the window, wave at them, say thanks, blow them a kiss, because they work hard. Okay. I do have a question about streetlights on Bridge Street. They are pretty close to useless. There's, I don't, I mean, I'm no engineer, but they're so tall, and those lights are so far up, by the time it hits the street, the streets are dark. So I'm wondering if we could encourage Public Works to, you know, either get new bulbs or design some new light fixtures, because it's a real dark street. I do have a question about public access stations for the city council. It's my understanding that Spectrum provides a public access station for Watsonville City Councils, but DirecTV doesn't. And I'm wondering if there's something that can be done with that. And I love, love, love the compost program.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else from the public?
Members of the council, Marta Belayich, District 1. Saba Charter School is pursuing a zoning amendment. However, Saba has been an adverse impact on the neighborhood because of severe traffic impacts, among other things. Public Submittals identified those traffic impacts as a basis for opposing the rezoning during the Planning Commission meeting last year. The Planning Commission did not approve the rezoning. It appears that thereafter, city officials determined the traffic impact situation to be legally problematic. As a solution, Watsonville city officials have directed Saba parents to use Highway 129 as a drop-off and pickup area to reduce traffic on Locust Street. There is a risk with the city's strategy in this regard, insofar as Highway 129 is Caltrans jurisdiction. Caltrans may block such dangerous traffic planning. In recognition of this, it appears that city officials have edited the proposed conditions of approval to merely require Saba to apply for a Caltrans encroachment permit to facilitate this. It also appears that city officials are attempting to use this ephemeral condition to convince the city council that a durable, reliable solution has been attained for the traffic problem. That would be an illusion. Consider the possibility that Caltrans may block Highway 129 for drop-off and pickup after Saba zoning change, or a student may be hit. It's quite possible that city officials would then redirect Saba traffic right back to Locust Street as a solution, bringing the problem to where it started. Council members should consider all possibilities in assessing the traffic situation and mitigations being proposed. Last year, traffic coordinator Adolfo Gonzalez told neighborhood stakeholders to ask Caltrans if we wanted to know whether the Highway 129 protocol was safe and appropriate. The question I pose to council is, did city officials or Saba ask Caltrans? If not, why not? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Nick Belayich, District 1. First of all, thanks to City Manager Mendez for meeting with me to discuss the neighborhood opposition to Saba zoning change. And a big thanks to Mayor Montesino. You spent a lot of time with us. Greatly appreciated, not only as mayor, but also as our council member. You're all welcome to come by into our neighborhood and talk to our neighbors and see what's going on over there regarding this issue. I can always tell what group of people a government has less respect for by watching how they treat them. About 20 years ago, the city asked me to sit on a county landfill committee to decide where the next county landfill would go. And for 30 months, I got to watch county staff come up with all kinds of reasons on why the dump belonged in South County. About seven years ago, Supervisor Caput asked me to sit on a cannabis committee for the county, which is an issue I knew nothing about, but I studied in great detail. And I got to watch for seven months and many months afterwards, county staff come up with all kinds of de facto prohibitions on why the cannabis operations should all be in South County. South County has the lower-income people, more of the immigrants, minorities, everything like that. And North County likes to push things that they don't want into South County. Well, now I'm watching this city that has a school, Saba, which was operating next to the city offices for a while and was an obvious nuisance. Everybody knows it. And then, all of a sudden, the school got improperly shoved into the West Side. And the West Side is made up of lower-income immigrants. So now, I hate to see the city behaving like the county. And it's a very disrespectful thing. I have too many years of political experience in this county, 25 years, something like that. And it always gets depressing watching an environmental justice issue pop up like this and just get ignored. So I'm urging you to treat the Westsiders with the same respect as everyone else for zoning, traffic compatibility issues, and noise, everything else like that. So if anybody wants to come by the neighborhood, let us know. We'd invite you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public like to weigh in?
My name is Hector Correa, District 5. Good evening, councilmen. So on the corner of East High and Lincoln, I've already called the city to complain, but it seems like I'm not getting anywhere with them. So corner of East High and Lincoln, there's a AA that goes on all the way till 10 o'clock at night. They walk by, they leave trash, they park in people's driveways, that little business there, whatever it is. They, so right when you get off on East High and you're trying to make either a left or a right on Lincoln, they have, their cars are blocking the sidewalks, so it's hard just to kind of even make a left or a right. And my neighbor last week got in a car accident there. So if they are, and just parking itself is just a problem there. So I feel like if they're going to provide a service, I know they want to get help. The people that go, they want to get help, but they need to provide parking for their people that go and show up. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Murray Fons. I'm Assistant Director of Public Works for Watsonville. Happy Engineers Week to the council and to the public. Come join us for tomorrow's 19th Annual Egg Drop. It will take place just outside the building here at 3:30. It will be an excellent opportunity to use your skills under extreme weather. We'll see some extra-special designs, I'm sure. More good news, the utility work on Freedom Boulevard is winding down. It should conclude in the next week or two, and the city's road rehabilitation project will follow suit. We appreciate the patience that the communities had. The weather has made the utility project extend longer than anticipated, and it's beat the road up even more. The city's road project will include replacing sidewalks, upgrading a bus stop, installing a signal at Sydney, and then rehabilitating the roadway. The paving will come at the end, so we shouldn't see the huge closures right away. But please bear with us. We'll have to suffer a little more before we get the road that we want. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
You're not getting away that quick.
You're going to come with your egg drop.
Tomorrow, 3:30, right?
Right.
Yes, I will watch. So on Freedom Boulevard, you're saying that next week, the utility work is all done? All underground work is done as well? And then, what's the next step?
In the next week or two, we anticipate the utility work concluding. Then, the city's road rehabilitation project will start.
What's that?
We're going to upgrade some of the sidewalks.
Where?
On Freedom Boulevard between Alta Vista and Green Valley.
Which, I know, but which sidewalks? Are like all of them?
No, not all of them. The curb ramps, one of the bus stops, and some of the other areas, I don't know the specifics, where they don't comply with accessibility standards.
And I would imagine the bus stop is on the new development on Atkinson.
Correct.
And I actually, since you're here, I noticed that one of the poles is really close to the building. Are they going to remove that pole, or how is that?
A utility pole?
Yes.
I would need to check.
Okay, if you could.
Yeah, I want to say that they, yeah, we'll bring our report back, but I think the pole is going to be moved.
Is it? Because I remember something about that pole. And then, when I saw it built, I'm like, dang, that pole's on top of the building.
PG and G is not, you know, our friend, and that sort of.
Going to move it closer, I believe.
Closer, okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
With that, no one from the public, I'm going to bring it back to council. Who wants to go first? Councilmember Dutra, looks like.
Okay, thank you. I first want to say, what do I want to say first? We've been working on the We've been working on the sister cities for Velish, Portugal, so we're looking forward to going to Portugal this summer and signing our agreement with Velish. So that's going to be, we've been working with our committee, and that's coming along, and so we're real excited to finalize that agreement. And this past weekend, we, I attended with the rest of the council, our meeting to go over our strategic priorities, and that's great to, you know, just kind of review exactly what we want to do here in the city in the future and the vision that we have. So I appreciate everybody, the city staff, everyone taking their Saturday off to come and work with us to, you know, talk about the vision of our community. I also wanted to recognize someone, her name was Alina Hammer. She was well-known in our community. She passed away. As mayor, you get to, you know, choose kind of some of the issues that you want to address and topics that you want to address in the community. Alina approached me when I was the mayor in regard to a Senate bill that about for the end of life, and so that came to our city council, and unfortunately, her life is now has passed, but she fought for a more humane way of dying, and I appreciate people who bring topics that, you know, may be controversial, but at the end of the day, are important. And so I want to say, you know, Alina will be missed. She had my back, and I know the work that she's done in our community will last for a very long time, so in memory of Alina.
Councilmember Parker.
Thank you, Mayor. So just wanted to mention a couple things. So we'll start off with the lighthearted stuff, which is Saco Student Ambassador and Exchange Program. We'll be meeting, having a beautiful fundraising dinner this weekend, Saturday, February 25th, at the Seaside Golf Course, if you're interested, and it's sponsorship for students ambassadors to Croatia. I just wanted to say thank you to our Rec Department and Community Services about our pickleball. Pickleball's taken off. So thank you, Director Nick, for that information, and they're looking to get more courts and more people involved, so that's huge. And then I want to bring it around to something I didn't mention when I was doing all that discussion about the flooding. I wanted to say, take this time to say a big thank you to Tomata Vivas, who is our Assistant City Manager, and now she's doing a whole nother job too in addition to that. But during that time, was a real lifeline for many of us and had her cruise down and has such a great connection to our entire community. You had people coming out, not only did you set up programs for people, you know, with CAB, you had so many volunteers that came because you asked, and that's just amazing. And I want you to know, as we, as the mayor said about the 10,000 man-hours that were focused on this, that your focus to detail, and I know that makes you work 24/7 because you can't handle, you can't help yourself, it was amazing during that time and very helpful. Even when you delivered bad news, you delivered bad news in a constructive way, so there was something, something to take out of it. So I wanted to say a big thank you, because I haven't talked about it enough, Tomata Vivas, for all your support and help, especially for all our flooded areas. Thank you very much.
Who's to go next? Councilmember Orozco?
Thank you. So thank you for joining us tonight. There's a couple of things that I've been keeping busy with as well. I also attended the strategic planning meeting, and it was really, it was a great opportunity to just exchange ideas as well, so thank you for city staff for just allowing that open space to make that happen. I also, just today, got the chance to walk through SEBA School. So I did a tour with a couple folks that showed me the areas of concerns and possible mitigation efforts that they plan on putting in place, and some that they have already put in place, and I welcomed the opportunity to also talk to residents in that area. I like to make sure that my decisions in anything that I decide on is inclusive and also informed as much as possible, so I do welcome that opportunity. And lastly, we will be appointing someone to the Personnel Commission in District Three tonight, so I just want to acknowledge all the volunteers who invest their time and energy in making our city a better place to live and to thrive in, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark?
Just a few things. Thank you to the staff. As always, you guys are wonderful. I also attended our strategic plan update this weekend, and getting caught up on everything that the city has planned and everything that they have already accomplished was wonderful. I attended the Hillcrest Estates Groundbreaking last week. It's wonderful to see that there's 144 homes that are being built for sale in the city. That is the first time that that has happened in many, many years. Most of the projects that we have come through are built and they are rented, they are not actually for sale. So that is a really, really good thing. If you get an opportunity, go on and check it out. It's a beautiful vista and a beautiful view up there as well. I also want to put this out there, I don't have a date yet, but especially for my constituent here from District Five, I am planning a town hall meeting. I'm looking probably mid-spring. We don't have dates yet, just as of yet. I'm working with city staff. Thank you very much for assisting. And when we have the facilities and the date set, we'll send every, the notices out to everybody in District Five, and we can get together and start working together on things to put our district forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor Pretend, Kudos Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So a few things. I also went to the groundbreaking at Hillcrest. Beautiful, as Councilmember Clark said, just really, really nice homes that are going to be built and help with some of the shortage in homes that we experienced. I believe about 30 some odds, 30 something of those homes are affordable homes, so that's super exciting. It was a really nice event. I also attended our strategic meeting where we got together with all our staff and really went over in depth some of the goals and planning that we have. I have, my car broke down on Saturday right after that being, so I've been walking around town, and I just really wanted to remind folks, be mindful of pedestrians, drive safe, drive under the speed limit, because I've had some close calls, so please stop for pedestrians. I also have a couple of meetings coming up this week, so I have a CAB boarding, board meeting tomorrow, I have a metro meeting coming up, and on a personal note, I want to congratulate my sister, who just gave birth to her second child, so I'm really excited to have a niece, so very, very excited about that. And that concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Sosito?
Speak with, after the last meeting. Obviously, we have a very important issue coming up on the 28th with SEBA. I also had an opportunity to tour the school and get some additional briefing and information about that, and I really echo Councilwoman Orozco's viewpoint that we really want to hear from all sides of that perspective and really want to make an informed decision on that. And my newborn turned one month. I can't believe he's one month old, so. Thank you for the, being so gracious to allow me to leave so that I can go to the lactation facilities that this county has gone above and beyond to give to me and to every other woman who works. There is, that is an amazing development here in the last 10 to 15 years that, you know, I can participate and continue to nurse a young child, so thank you.
Thank you. You know, just two things, you know, I sit with, you should have a pleasure to work with such great council members, that they put their time and effort in, you know, coming on Saturdays, but, you know, they're all over the community. I know, we touch bases, you know, everywhere, whether it's an event, meetings, just a great, great folks to work with, and they got, you know, the community's back. I just want to thank you all for your efforts, you know, kudos to all. And also want to, you know, concur with Councilwoman Dutra, Alina Hammer was a longtime bus driver. She retired there. Maybe she, rest in peace, she was, you know, I didn't, they have a pleasure to work with her, but I got to know her after she retired. But she worked under our contract for the union for a lot of years, but she was always one of, one of the people advocating for Watsonville, even though she, you know, she ended up in Watsonville, but she wasn't from Watson, but she had her box on service issues, you know, anything that she could help in the community. She was in Watsonville over in the 80s and the 90s and recently back when she moved to the area back. So I just want to say, rest in peace. Thank you.
With that, we're going to go report a closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, the council met in closed session to discuss threats to public services or facilities under Government Code Section 54957A, and there is no reportable action.
Thank you. And now we're going to go on to 6D. It's the mayor's proclamation recognizing February as the National Career Technical Education Month, so. for February 21st, 2023, whereas Career Technical Education Month is a public awareness campaign which takes place each February to celebrate the value of CTE, and whereas Career Technical Education offers students the opportunity to gain the academic and technical skills necessary for college career and life readiness, and whereas currently, more than 3,200 students of our Paro Valley Unified School District Secondary Schools are participating in technical, career technical education pathways, and whereas Career Technical Education provides students with rigorous academic programs, a real-world work experience that improves the quality of their education and increases engagement, achievement in high school competition and post-secondary transitions, and whereas the passion, interest, and talent students discover early in their educational experience enables them to make informed and sound decisions about their academic coursework as well as pathway to study that advances their education and career goals. And whereas leaders from business and industry here in nationwide report increases challenges in finding qualified employees for high-scale careers in critical and growing CTE-related fields such as climate science, healthcare, engineering, and sustainable agriculture, and whereas Career Technical Education prepares students for many careers by offering integrated programs to study the linked secondary and post-secondary education that lead to the attainment of industry-certified credentials and college credits while students are still in high school, and whereas the city of Watson is committed to educational equity and excellence in our schools to prepare students for live wage careers to support their families and meet the needs of local employers, and whereas thus, the city of Watson will continue to participate in the Career Technical Education, contribute to the advancement of a flourishing workforce to strengthen the economy, improve the quality of life in the city and community of Paro Valley. So therefore, I, Eduardo Montesino, Mayor of City of Watson in the state of California, on behalf of the city council hereby recognize February 2023 National Technical Education Month and acknowledges the vital role that CTE has to readiness learners for college and careers.
Thank you. Mouthful, but. But if you want to say a few words, please, you know, it's an honor.
My name, oh, sorry, is it on? Yes. My name is Peggy Pugh. I am the Executive Director for Teaching and Learning for PVUSD. I am here with Julie Edwards, our CTE Coordinator, and most importantly, Paolo Camacho, who is a Watsonville High senior and a CTE education pathway superstar. And so we're just grateful to the city for your partnership, for the council and our staff, your staff, for so many of the things you've shared with our students, that partnership that really builds a stronger community, that provides wonderful outcomes for our students and our residents, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do. Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I say a few words?
Go ahead.
So thank you, thank you all, Julie. Hi, hi, everyone. I was a CTE teacher at Paro Middle School, so what a great experience. The students really loved it, and you really give a, you open up opportunities that they may not have in other ways, and I know it was, it was a very beginning when I was there, so I remember the, the learning, the, you know, the, sometimes the hard way, and, but, you know, at the end of the day, it's definitely rewarding for the students, so thank you for what you guys do.
Thank you. With that, we're going to go on to number seven, Consent Agenda. All items appearing in the Consent Agenda are recommended action items that are considered to be routine and will be acted upon as in one motion. Any items removed will be considered immediately after consent is motioned. The mayor will allow input prior to the approval of the Consent Agenda. Any questions on the Consent Agenda? Councilmember Parker?
I see the court name is Women's Club, but I think we're supposed to.
I think.
I think our director, Nick, can give you an update on that?
Okay, great.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Nicole Baca, Parks and Community Services Director, just to get to your question, Councilmember Parker, we are working with the Padres. It sounds like their registration with the state of California has lapsed, and so we're waiting for them to rectify that before we move forward with the exit or the lease renewal, but we're anticipating that's going to happen soon, so.
Thank you very much.
Any public comments or questions? See, none.
Quick, so again, just to reiterate, we will be appointing Lisette Sunyga to the Personnel Commission. Lisette, thank you so much for agreeing to this commitment and for, again, giving back to our community. Thank you.
Members of the public, any comment on the Consent Agenda? See, none. I'm going to bring it back, but I'm going to, I'm going to remove 7B to be acted upon, so it's going to be, 7B is going to turn into 8A. Yeah, 7, 7B. Amendment number one to the Griffin instructions. So that's going to be moved on to.
8A.
After the Consent Agenda.
All right, then I move, I move the Consent Agenda to be passed minus 8A.
7B, which is now 8A.
It's a race.
Yeah. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Can I get roll call?
I have a second.
Orozco? Aye.
Dutra?
Aye.
Orozco?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Kudos Carter?
Aye.
Sosito?
Aye.
And Montesino?
Yes.
The motion carries.
So now we're going to move on to aid, aid items removed from the agenda, which is, was amendment to number one with Griffin instructions for.
which is, was amendment to number one with Griffin instructions for project management services for the, um, Ramsey Park implementation. And this is just a quick, uh, quick question. Um, would that get us to, uh, the plan, the, the plan to be speed up?
Oh, okay. Good question. All right. So, uh, Nick Calabacca, Parks and Community Services Director again. Um, this amendment to Griffin's contract actually doesn't help us actually speed up the, the project in any way. What this really does is, um, our current, uh, our current, um, contract with Griffin is for project management services. So Griffin is working with us to help work with our designer to keep the contract, or keep the project on track, um, keep it within budget as, as much as possible. And, um, this amendment, um, takes their existing contract, extends it, but then also kind of transitions it into the construction period so that our project manager will, will stay on board with us through the construction of the project. Um, so they'll help us get through bidding, um, help us manage the project during construction. And then the plan is to bring on an, an inspector, um, to help with kind of the day-to-day mechanics of actual construction. So it doesn't necessarily speed things up, but will, but will be, um, kind of an additional resource for us, um, as we embark on this really large project.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Uh, with that, can I?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
It may be humorous, Nick, but, um, so they're there to keep us on task and on budget, yet we're increasing their payment and extending their contract. I just thought the irony was interesting. So that's all.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Government works. Uh, with that, can I get a motion to, uh, pass this item alone?
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Let the move in second.
Clark?
Aye.
Dutra?
Aye.
Orozco?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Girus Carter?
Aye.
Salsito?
Aye.
And Montesino?
Aye.
The motion carries.
And now we're gonna go on to, um, number nine, which, um, nine A is, um, the stationary vehicle miles travel, which is gonna be put off to our next meeting, um, because some technical issues. And then nine B is consideration of a comprehensive financial report and mid-year report for FY twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Staff.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Marissa Durant, Administrative Services Director, and I'm here with Patricia Rodriguez, our Assistant Finance Manager, who at the end of my presentation will be showing our transp- our new transparency portal. The city has partnered with Open Gov, and we will be able to show you an interactive budget and easy to use.
Yeah, please.
And I do speak low, so. Um, so with Open Gov, we will be able to show you a more interactive budget, and it'll be in an easy-to-read format so citizens can understand it and follow it better. But what she, what she'll show you tonight is our transparency portal, which will show you our current and past prac- uh, finances. And with that, as indicated, we are here to report on last fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two audit, the Measure Y audit, and also the current fiscal, current year fiscal, uh, mid-year. We're here tonight to tell you how we're doing financially. So as you can see on the slide in front of you, there's a couple of recommended actions that we'll be asking you to accept tonight. The report for last year's fiscal audit that ended with June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two for both, uh, our regular city audit and our Measure Y audit, we will also be having a Measure Y Oversight Committee Review Meeting with them to go over the same Measure Y report, but we haven't been able to do that as they're having scheduling issues with them. At the end, we will also present you with a resolution for mid-year appropriations to get us through their current fiscal year in the amount of one point seven eight million dollars, which will also include four additional positions for our city departments. So the overall financial picture is that we have, we have seen the same picture for the last couple of years, namely about four, is that we are in good, stable financial position. But we do know we have cautions coming. We know that CalPERS will peak in twenty-four, twenty-five. We also have funding issues for our capital and some of our deferred maintenance in both our general funds and our enterprise funds. So we have to plan for that. I just wanted to throw the cash, the caution out for that. And then our annual financial report is available online, and this is the link where you can find it. And the front of the CAFER looks, looks like the picture shown. So our annual financial report did, did undergo an independent audit by Mason Associates. We received a non-qualified opinion, which means that in our auditors believe our financial reports are good and they have no findings. This would not be possible with all the hard work that our mighty Finance Department of Nine is able to do every year. And this, this, um, award that we receive on this, on this, and also the budget is very much to the department's credit. The statement of net position that I'm showing on the screen above is essentially the city's balance sheet. So this shows all of our city's assets and our liabilities, and the number that's circled is our total equity. So we have two hundred and sixty-five million, uh, zero two six, um, thousand. So this includes all our long-term and our short-term. So we have our roads, buildings, uh, long-term debt. And so from, from last fiscal year to the current fiscal year, we did see a fourteen point six million dollar increase, with the larger increase being seen in our enterprise funds, namely the water fund. And then in our governmental-type funds, we saw five point two million net, net position increase. And the, uh, largest contributors to that were the library fund, the Impact P funds, and SB one. This next slide shows you a history of our general fund, fund balance. We have seen it increase over the last eight years. We could see in twenty fourteen, we had scary lows during the recession, but we, we've been recovering nicely. And as a reminder, when, when we show general fund, fund balance, that's the short-term. That's how we're doing right now. That's how our, um, the city's current health. So our general fund did see a forty-seven, forty-three thousand dollar decrease from last year to this year. And there are two reasons for that. We have a Gatsby seventy-two accounting pronouncement, which we had to, uh, bring down our fair market value of some of our investments. We will not realize that loss, but it's an accounting entry that we're required to record. The second reason is the general fund is made up of eighteen sub-funds, one of them being the Grants Fund, and we did not receive one of our grants and reimbursement in time for that. And that's, that's the, the two reasons why the general fund did not see an increase. So our general fund is carved in several areas already. We're able to fully fund our reserves. Over the last four years, our general fund, fund balance has exceeded our operational expenditures by thirty percent. Our goal is twenty, so we meet that nicely. So we're able to fully fund our cash flow reserve, our emergency reserve, both of them being ten percent, our CalPERS reserve at a million. We're fully to, we're fully able to, to our carry forward capital, our remaining Ramsey capital that we've committed to them. And then we end up with a remaining balance of ninety-six thousand at the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-two. So now we'll dive into our current mid-year and how we're doing there. This slide shows you all of our general fund revenue sources, with our four, four top, uh, revenue sources being property tax, sales tax, and utility users' tax. We are expected to be over budget on all of these three categories, but not by much, not by what we saw in the, in the earlier years, about three years back. Our sales tax consultants tell us that we're gonna start seeing the effects of folks having to adjust to higher interest rates and less buying. Um, then the category that saw some increases were restaurants, but that's because restaurants are charging a little more to make up for all their losses. But customers are still going, so those rates are staying. So the, those will be the areas where we will see the effects of deflation and interest rate affecting us will be in the sales tax. Our hotel tax. Our hotel tax is coming back nicely. We have eight hotels that give us this revenue. Um, and then our most exciting, uh, revenue in our, in our top non-departmentals is Measure R. So we are expecting to see one quarter of Measure R revenues to the tune of one point two. You will not be seeing an appropriation request for these funds as Measure R does follow the same general fund reserve requirement of twenty percent, and that will fund our reserve. So in the, in the future, in May, when you see our new budget, it'll be all programming, and we'll be able to, to, uh, be fully funded in our reserves. Our departmental revenues, they're all coming in a little old, under what we thought, um, with CDD having less permits being issued. But they're busy working on, on the permits that they did issue last year. Our police department, we budgeted for two SRO. Those are our school resource officers, but we were only awarded one contract. And then they're also, their parking revenues are coming in under budget. Our fire department, our fire, fire department inspection revenues are coming in low. One of the public works divisions in the general fund is to do a sidewalks program. Their, um, revenue is also coming in under budget. And then we have that other category that we're shown at the end that shows really high inflated number. There's two big reasons for that. The city was able to, to, um, do a five million dollar loan to the County of Santa Cruz for, uh, the purchase of Watsonville Hospital. So in these first six months, you see both the loan proceeds and the loan being made, and that's the reason for the additional five million there. And then also we were able to sell the Porter Building. And with the Porter Building proceeds, we made an additional donation to Watsonville Hospital, and we're also able to fund our general plan. And I'm sorry that I skipped PCS. I just noticed it. So PCS is also projected to have less revenue coming in due to slower start of their programs. They also had one of their buildings that's a big revenue generator being used as a COVID vaccination site, and then they had hiring challenges. Um, but they have, they have some very exciting news as they have, um, entered into a partnership with PVUSD, and they will be offering after-school programming in our schools. And this really extends our reach to children, and it's an exciting partnership for the city. And that's what I just said. Um, and then this slide shows you our general fund expenditures. Of note is that all of our departments are supposed to come in within budget, with the exception of our fire department that is still struggling with their overtime. There's two reasons why they're, why they're struggling with their overtime. They have four vacant positions, and then they're also participated at the beginning of the fiscal year with mutual aid response. So we will be asking for additional appropriation to cover that overtime, but we are expecting to receive it back through mutual aid contracts. And then also our storms, as, as we've talked about, we, we had an additional ten thousand man-hours. Much of it was overtime that was unexpected. We had cleanup costs, contract costs, other costs that, um, that were unexpected to us when we put the budget together. So we will be asking for an additional appropriation of five hundred thousand to get us through, through the fiscal year. So at the end of the day, at the end of twenty twenty-three, we do predict to spend down two point nine million of our, of our fund balance, mostly on our capital that was programmed already in our budget. And then we will also be carrying forward two point three million in our new budget that we will also be funding. So the, our general fund appropriation requests are as follows. Our fire department is asking for an additional one hundred and fifty thousand for overtime costs, and we are expected to be fully reimbursed through mutual aid agreements. Our PCS department, they're requesting two new positions, a recreation specialist and a recreation coordinator, and we will be reimbursed by PVUSD contract as well. These two new positions will run that program, that after-school program. Our city clerk's office, our city clerk's office is finding increased costs for hosted services as they've had it, had to add users for DocuSign and other services that have increased our, our efficiency, but they come at a cost. So they're also asking for additional appropriations of fifty-one thousand. And then in our public works department, um, they're seeing reimbursable, reimbursable property repairs. That's damage to poles or gates or whatever gets damaged. That's city property coming in at a higher cost than what was originally budgeted for. So we are requesting an additional seventy-five thousand for that. And then their MSC charges are also coming in high, and that's their vehicles, their vehicle repairs, and then other building repairs, mostly due to the aging of City Hall. And then our last one is our storm's repot- response. We have an additional five hundred thousand for our overtime cleanup and EOC costs. Our enterprise funds. These are our funds that are run like, uh, if they were a business. So our airport fund was conservative with their budget, and despite they have, have had high fuel and legal costs, last fiscal year, they were able to, uh, increase their fund balance to three hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Our other utility funds are seeing their able, their revenue stabilized, are in, are in good projected, are projected to have good fund balances. They will be requesting two new positions, one in the wastewater department, and operator three to manage their water recycle, res- water recycling, recycling facility more efficiently, but we will be able to be reimbursed by PVWMA in the future for these costs. And then in our water department, we're requesting a water operator one to meet their operational needs of, of, of upcoming chromium six needs. So this slide shows you our four enterprise funds. Our airport fund ended the year at three hundred and fifty-eight thousand. They're expected to increase their fund balance to the, at the end of this fiscal year to four hundred and three thousand. Our wastewater, uh, ended the year with fifteen point two million. They will be spending down some of their fund balance for capital needs, and they're expected to end the year at ten point three million. Our solid waste fund, uh, ended fiscal year twenty-two with ten point one million, and they are also expected to spend down some of their fund balance and project to have an eight million dollar fund balance at the end of twenty-three. Our water fund, our water fund had twenty-eight million at the close of the books, and they're also, their revenues are coming in strongly and are, are expected to do about eight million dollars worth of capital, but they should end up the year with about the twenty-eight million. So as a reminder, these are their enterprise fund appropriation requests. We have the airport asking for an additional thirty thousand to offset a cre- increased cost for events and fuel. Our wastewater department, they're asking for a contract, uh, to do their, uh, recycling plan, and then one time, oh, I'm sorry, a one position, a wastewater operator three. The cost for that will be forty-one thousand through the end of the fiscal year. And then our water division is asking for one water operator one, and the cost through the end of the year will be thirty-three thousand. And then the city has four internal service funds, but we'll be talking about two because two of them are insurance. So we just use them as internal, internal funds. There's no really activity. So our internal service funds are, the two that we'll talk about tonight are information and technology and our MSC vehicle shop. So our IT department is currently working to roll out Office three sixty-five and replacing an eighteen-year-old phone system throughout all of our city departments. They're also working to continuously increase our cybersecurity awareness and working on enhancements through all upgrades to new systems purchased. Our MSC vehicle shop, this is in its second year of being in an internal service fund, and it's also facing increased costs for fuel and vehicle parts. But they were able to build these into their budget last fiscal year and are expected to absorb their increases. So this slide shows you how they ended their year and where they're projected to end the current fiscal year. So they ended, uh, IT ended its year with about one point nine million. They're, they are working on a lot of their capital and are expected to spend down some of that fund balance, and will most likely end the year with one point two million. Our MSC shop, they ended the year with seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, and they're supposed to have a positive fund balance of six hundred and thirty-four at the end of the fiscal year. And then we wanted to highlight some of our other major funds throughout the city. So we have our labor, library fund that ended the year at almost two million dollars last fiscal year. They, um, are doing rather well with their revenues and also staying within budget, and should end the year about one point nine million for fiscal year twenty-three. Our Measure Y fund, they ended the year about three point five million fund balance, and they are, um, supposed to, supposed to add a little to their fund balance and end about four million. And then these, these next three funds, they are for our streets projects. They're the gas tax, SB one, and Measure D. In our gas tax, we see eight hundred and six at the end of the fiscal year, and they're projected to spend down and then, and actually increase their fund balance, and will end up at about eight hundred and fifty thousand. Our SB one fund ended the year at one point nine million and are also working on some of their capital, but will have to carry some of it forward as they're not able to finish it all, and we should end the year with two point three million. Our Measure D fund, same story. They budgeted a lot of capital, but they haven't been able to do all of that work. And so they will end the, end the year with four point one million in the bank. And then just a, a little more information, information on our Measure Y funds. So our police ending fund reserve at fiscal year twenty-two was about one point seven million. Our fire was one point two. And then PCS. Our fire was 1.2, and then PCS was 484,000. They're projected to stay within budget and increase their fund balances a little bit with the exception of PCS, and I'll give you the reason why in our next slide. So the Measure Y is requesting additional appropriations. You might remember that we mentioned fire is struggling to hire. Well, fire is thinking outside the box and trying to fund a paramedic program to the tune of 75,000 to help bring more firefighters to our city. And then they're asking for additional $7,000 for first aid supplies so they can put them in their fire trucks. Our Measure Y Police is asking for 70, I'm sorry, 85,000 to fund one additional training day. This was an ad hoc recommendation. And then they also received $37,000 back from an insurance company, and they're looking to appropriate that to be able to replace the vehicle that was damaged. And then Measure Y Parks, here comes Measure Y Parks, and they're proposing to spend down some of their fund balance, 341,000, to fund various center improvements, their gym floors or benches, improved lighting, and a much bigger list. So just as we're getting ready to work on our new budget, I wanted to once again mention our cautions and our outlooks that we see is that we know that we're going to have a higher contribution amount for our person-funded liability. They did report a loss in fiscal year '22, and it usually lags a year before you get your new amount with the higher costs. So we'll know that we have that. We know we have a ton of capital needs. We're working on both facilities and park studies, and we'll be coming back with you, with those to you, and hopefully with a way to fund those, some of those projects. And then we have eight labor negotiations that will be up this fiscal year, and we're also hoping to work through those and have agreements with them before our budget is completed so that our budget represents these costs. So we have management, mid-management, confidential, police management, fire management, and the executive team. And so just to remind you what today's actions are, they're for you to accept by motion our annual comprehensive report ending fiscal year '21-'22, to accept by motion our mid-year financial report for the current year, to accept by motion our annual Measure Y audit for fiscal year '21-'22, and also to approve a resolution appropriating additional 1.79 million, including four additional positions. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Questions? Councilmember Clark seems eager.
And one clarifying question, great report, by the way. Going back to the $5 million for the hospital, that was a loan.
It was a loan.
Okay. When you spoke about the proceeds of the Porter building, you said it was a donation to the hospital, or was it also part of the loan?
No, so the sale of the Porter building brought us in 1.1 million, and we appropriated, I think, 880,000 towards our general plan, and then we appropriated an additional 120,000 for an additional loan, not loan, grant to the hospital.
Okay, okay. Because when I heard donation, I went, it's gone.
It was used to purchase the hospital.
Yes, okay. Wonderful, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker?
Yes, that's what was in the other line. No, they quickly paid us back. Yeah, quickly paid us back.
City clerk, and I don't know, 1,000? I thought that was interesting, is it? No, he's not there.
Another question.
I was going to say, so you said DocuSign, is this just that everything got more expensive?
He said it was three softwares. DocuSign was an example of that one, was an additional 20,000 because we added a lot more users than when we originally thought. We actually enhanced the way we use it, so it's more effective to city employees, but it comes at a cost, so that's what we're seeing.
Ari, can I really quickly, because Erwin and I worked on this?
Great.
Yeah, so the DocuSign, what happened is we did add a lot more users, as Marissa mentioned, because staff is finding that there's extended uses beyond just contract signing. It just streamlines everything, it makes everything faster. So because we added, I believe we doubled the amount of users from our beginning contracts, so that was the increase that you see there, that was the amount of the increase.
Does this help somehow with the, and how you move things forward?
Not necessarily with the agenda, because it, you know, it's not, we're not signing anything, but it does in contracts, yeah.
Just that program, the other programs.
Yeah, so I believe it's Escrib, which is our agenda management software, that's one of them. Next Request is the other one, I think, which is our records management platform, and I don't know if you've spoken to the city clerk specifically recently about records requests, but we've had a major, major increase. We have, I think, 60 in just these two months, and we're not even through February. So there's been big increases, so yeah, there are definitely softwares that are very useful to the function.
Next Request, you're going to love it, Erwin. Totally ask question, but Al Hunter did a fabulous job.
Yes, she did.
Good on that, thank you very much.
In your absence.
And the $500,000 on overtime.
So it includes overtime, it's not off for overtime. It also has our cleanup costs and our contract costs. We had to buy sandbags, sand for our citizens, so it's not all overtime, but some of it is.
But it entails more than just overtime, it entails the sand, the garbage, you know, the big dumpsters that we had out there.
I didn't look, I didn't look through it detailed enough to know if it included all of that, but it did have a lot of cleanup costs. It had some contracts for granite construction that they helped come clean out some of our streets and things like that.
Oh yeah, we saw those, yeah, the machinery that came, okay, great, thank you very much.
Yeah, on the garbage, staff worked, and not only staff worked with the foundation of Santa Cruz County to get some of that funded. So that was able to offset a lot of those costs, but there was a ton of other things that obviously were part of it.
I mean, it was a massive.
Yes, it was.
Massive, yes.
Anybody else? Can you go down, scroll down some of the, because I have questions, but, hmm, which one was it?
The general fund?
I think that one, maybe before that one. Want me to switch it over?
Oh, before this one?
No, just, I think I just answered my question, thank you. Thank you. This is a public meeting, so public is welcome to comment on this venture in our session. So anybody want to comment on the, you know, budget? CNN will bring it back to council for appropriate motions or comments or questions.
I make a motion to move this forward.
Councilmember Parker?
As written.
And may pretend, but it's like those Carter, seconds?
Do you like me to read that out?
Yeah.
As an action on resolution pending the 2223 budget to authorize 1,789,759 budget appropriation into various funds and to authorize for additional positions.
That's perfect, thank you.
There you go. Clark?
Aye.
Dutra?
Aye.
Orozco?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Higros Carter?
Aye.
Salsito?
Yes.
And Montesina?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Yeah, but before we finish this item, we're going to get a preview of Open Gov, which is going to be our, hopefully, help to understand in our community how the budget
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, city council, city staff. My name is Patricia Rodriguez, Assistant Finance Manager. I am here to talk to you about our budget software, Open Gov. I will focus more on our transparency module and demonstrate how to use that, and then I will briefly go over the other modules. I will start with the mission of Open Gov. Their mission is powering more effective and accountable government. Open Gov has other features other than the current, that offers other features that our Tyler Muni's system currently does not offer. Open Gov has many additional features such as the transparency portal, which I will be presenting, that will enhance our budget efficiently and communication with the public. Open Gov was liked by their customers who appreciate their customer service and the continuing, continuous improvements to the product, which we will look forward to. Open Gov has worked with over 1,600 other government agencies. One of the local agencies that currently use the software is the County of Santa Cruz, City of Scotts Valley, City of Hayward, and City of Corpentina. Open Gov offers the different modules such as the operating budget, the capital planning, the workforce planning, which is the salary calculation part, and the online budget book. In addition to, it also offers other platforms such as that transparency portal, open town hall, dashboards, and various reporting options. I will be focusing on the transparency module. The transparency module will increase not only communication with our departments but also with our community. It is a digital transformation where we would have reports where we will no longer be using and creating out of Excel. It will be a way to view sometimes what we call difficult financial data at a glance, either using graphs or tables. And I am going now to go to the main event and show you how it works. So the way you would go into Open Gov is you would click on the city website, click on the department, select the best department at city, which is finance, click on the link. The link on the left side will show Open Gov Financial Transparency. Once you're in there, the first thing that will appear is a how to use the report, really simple to follow, will show you how to go through, maneuver, and navigate the report. It's really quick, how to examples. If this is maybe your second time and you want to go through that same tutorial, you would go into the help, and then you would go to the welcome screen again. So at this point, this is the transparency portal. We have created three reports for you, the annual budget, the monthly budget versus actual, and the quarterly budget versus actual. Currently, we have created these reports with three years, the 2021, 2122, and the current. I will go through first how to demonstrate how to get this information through using the graphs. As you could tell, the minute I put the cursor on any of these options, you see the information already displayed, and it would work for any of the years that you're looking for. So for example, if I wanted to click and look at our current budget for this year, and I look at the budget for the revenues, or actually the expenses, it will display the different expense categories on the right side, and I also get to see the total just by clicking or moving my mouse. If you want to break down further the detail of what those expenses are, you could either click on the right-hand side, and it will break it down for you. You could go pretty, get happy in searching different things, and you could lose track of where you're at, you could simply go and click back or reset. Same thing with the revenues. If I click on the revenues on the graph here, and I want a further breakdown of what those charges for services are, I could just click on that category, and again, it will break down and give me the totals for all those things that are in the charges for services. If I wanted to see a different graph, and I enjoy, and I look, it just seems better to do a pie graph. I could just click on all these different options and move my cursor, and it will display all the different options that you're able to view for the different years. Reset, and I'll show you how you could get the same information using the table. Same way that we were clicking and drilling down on the revenues, I could just click on the revenues, click further down and say, give me my totals for the property taxes. I would click on property taxes, and it would show the totals for the different taxes under that category. I could minimize it, and then look at my expenses. Same way, if I want to see what makes up the salary category, I would click on that, and then it would break it down and show me what the different totals are for that category. Yes, you are. Yes, I will get to and demonstrate a department. I'm going to go ahead and reset that. So now I will go through the monthly budget versus actual. Again, same way of drilling into the graph and looking at the total by just putting your cursor or going to the bottom and breaking it down this way. This is a cumulative amount, meaning you see July, and then July and August would be in August, and September will include July, August, and September. And we could keep scrolling down, and at the end, you would see the total budget, the screen is very small, so let me keep going down. There is that total as of February, there's your revised budget, where we're at now as far as a percentage of from the budget to the actual. Now I will show you the quarterly budget versus actual. Again, I could go through this graph here, drill down, look at the detail, or go to the table down here. And these are in quarters. This data will be available the following month by the 20th. So then the quarter of March will be available on April 20th. Information for April will be available on May the 20th. I'm going to reset. So far, so good, correct? Wonderful data. So this is now looking at the information using the graph and the table. You could also have, you could also scroll and get your information through this view option here. Let's just say, I just want to look at my totals for the expense type. There they are. Scroll down, oh, I'm sorry, no, yep. So anyway, this is again, drill down, look at the detail, and there it is. Same concept with the revenue type, it will display, and you can see the detail after Let's just say you wanted to just look at the general fund and see the totals by departments, or I'm going to look at the expenses of the general fund by department. So here is the departments that make up the general fund and their totals. This is strictly just the total for each department. However, we have some departments that have other sub-departments underneath that make up that. So let's say, for example, Parks and Recs. They have the other divisions that make up the Parks Department, and you see their totals broken down. Others will not have sub-departments such as Community Development Department, they're just Community Development Department. Same thing with the revenues by department. You would then scroll down and look at what makes up their revenue in the summary total by department. Expenses by fund, this truly is what it says, the expenses by the fund. The fund, enterprise fund, and then this makes up the departments that make up the enterprise fund, and you see the total for each of those departments under the enterprise fund. Same concept with the revenues. Under each fund, you'll see the breakdown of what makes up the total revenues for each of the department. Now those were very easy way of drilling and look at information. You could also do filters, though. In the filters, you would go through and filter and select what you were looking for, either a fund, a function, which is really a department, or the revenue type and so on. So let's just say, for example, on the functions, I really want to just look at finance, and you look at finance, but finance also has two divisions underneath. I could narrow it down and just say- I could narrow it down and just say, just give me finance and not purchasing. And as you could tell, the minute I click on it, the graphs get updated. The minute I click, the graphs include whatever I'm clicking, and the data is also included in the table below. Different way of narrowing down and, and looking at the different years. Let's just say, I only want to look at the current fiscal year. I could minimize it and move, move this cursor to just include the year that I want. That was another way of filtering and getting your information. Again, if you forget where you're at, and you just want to start fresh and start all over, press the reset. I could have gone back to, this, this arrow here would have sent me back to my last search. Let's see, I wanted to also demonstrate and show you how, you're probably wondering if this information could be downloaded. It can. But go down to here. Currently, we have two options, the PNG, which is an image, and it would be the image of what you're currently searching. In other words, you would only download the current information that you have on your screen. Same thing with the CSV option. It would only download what you currently have on the screen. So say, for example, I, if I would have downloaded this, it would have only given me this information here, the revenues and the expenses. However, if I click and get the detail of the revenues, and then I download it, it will give me the rest of that information. So basically, you download only what's on the screen. And you're probably wondering if you have any questions, how would that, how can we answer some of your questions? You would go to help, contact City of Watsonville, fill out your information and your message, that email will go directly to Marissa and myself. This is the transparency portal. Other modules that we have and that we're looking forward to use is the open town hall. Open town hall is just another way to engage the public by creating surveys or feedbacks during the budget preparation, for example, or for any other financial questions, or any other city uses. Dashboards, that's also a really exciting feature. That's a way to customize information for our internal departments so that they could review their financial information again as at a glance as well. Operation, workforce, the capital improvement, and the online budget, we will continue to review and work with Open Gov on implementing these other modules so we could continue to create a GFOI award budget. That's my presentation. Let me now look at, I wanted to see the budget for a specific department, and go through and look at government, the council budget, and there it is. So this would be the council budget. A lot of information, a lot of time to play, and just look at which one fits your needs and answer a lot of your, either expenses, revenues, or a specific fund. Under expenses, these are the categories that are under that particular department. That is as far as we could drill down. So your total budget for the salary and benefits is 60,000, and currently, the breakdown is these three categories, the regular, the social security, and the health insurance to make up that 60,000.
That's for the seven of us.
Big spenders. Hopefully, we'll change that in the future, but thank you. Any other questions?
Seeing none. Thank you, thank you for, it's great, interactive, and you know, you can, you know, spend a day on this stuff. So thank you, but that's great for the community, you know, to be engaged and to ask, yeah, ask some questions if they have some, so thanks.
Oh, Councilmember Parker?
Accessibility is huge.
Yeah.
Compared to some of the facilities. That, that it goes quickly to certain things that you can look at, and it doesn't break it down, break it down, break it down, but at least you know we're a park, and then you can go from there. I'm just in awe of the amount of data entry you guys are doing that can create by the 20th of every month when it updates.
Correct.
Have somebody dedicated to that, or is everybody...
It, it's a team effort for, for finance. We have a lot of real data, but everything still needs to be verified and updated. So it gives us, gives us the payroll side, the accounts receivable, all the different divisions to update and confirm all that data. That's why we're updating this information until the 20th.
Didn't help you.
All right, with that, we're down to, yeah, assuming there's no public comment on Open Gov, seeing none, I'll bring it back. Number 10 is emergency items, have to attend, seeing none. Any, 11 requests or scheduling future items on the agenda? Seeing none, then it's adjournment, thank you.
Thank you.